All righty, well then let's get started and we can do some of the housekeeping while she getting long done. I'd like to call to order this monthly regular meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of April 2021. And as we have changed our remote attendance policy, we do not have to hold a vote to do remote attendance. But as acting as Chair, I am noting that we are still in the Governor's Declaration such that we are allowed to all of us attend remotely under the current code circumstances. So we can move on then to the first real item of business, which is to either accept the agenda or modify it for the evening. And I'm unaware of any desired changes to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented tonight?
A move that we accepted agenda as presented.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so that is approved. Next item up is public comment. So is there anyone from the public here this evening who has indicated a desire to want to talk to the board at this meeting? I don't, I don't see any hands waving. Have you gotten any notification at all, Tim?
No, none reporting at Cur or by email.
Okay, all right, then we are done with the public comment. And we can move to UPD new staff introductions, which is always a fun event when we have some of those.
Believe we do have staff introductions and I think staff's here to lead it off. I think Shane is up on the agenda.
Yes, hello everyone. I'm Shane Newell. I'm the facility maintenance supervisor. And I'm happy to announce John Adams is the new full-time facility maintenance worker. He will be working Tuesday through Saturdays and he's currently job shadowing with one of our employees that currently works Tuesday through Saturday. He's going to job shadow with him until he's comfortable working Saturdays because that's, we only have one maintenance person working on Saturdays. So it's very, very important to have someone that has a lot of knowledge of locations of utilities and things like that. So John has been working with the park district part-time since 2019. He's been working under Keith Ewerks, the construction crew leader. The one of the most recent projects he's completed is assisting with the playground installation in Crystal Lake Park. On top of that, he's done a lot of various projects with Keith over, over the last, well, currently going to be three summers or was going to be three summers, but full-time with us as of April 6th. So John's here this evening and if you'd like to say a few words, I think he can hear us. Hey guys, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hey, I just wanted to say hello and thanks. I'm glad to be on board and I've had a really good time working with the park district and I'm super excited to be on full-time capacity.
Likewise.
Welcome aboard.
Good to have you.
That's welcome.
Welcome. Are you from the Champagne, Urbana area?
I am. I live in Urbana. I've been here about, probably about two years now, two and a half years, something like that. I moved up from just south of St. Louis and yeah, so this was one of my, this was the first place I worked after I moved and I've been here ever since. So it's been a good time. I've enjoyed working with Keith and all the guys here in operations.
Yeah, you get a great bunch of people to work with.
Again, thank you and welcome aboard. Always a pleasure to meet new staff. And then I guess now we are moving on to Rich McMahon to do an introduction.
So I'd like to introduce Grant Goff, G O F F, as our new grounds maintenance technician. Grant also started with us on April 5th last Monday. We're very, very happy to have him. We've been, that position has been vacant for the last, just over a year since right before the pandemic kind of hit us last year. So very happy to have him. He's already gotten his hands in pretty much every aspect of grounds maintenance. Helping the arborist and mowing crew, athletic field maintenance and landscape crew. So he's already proving his worth and it was at a good time because as you may have heard before now, we've kind of struggled finding seasonal workers this year, more so than most years. So his presence has been very, very much appreciated and I hope he's enjoyed it so far. We've enjoyed having him and I'll let him kind of give you a little bit of background about himself.
Um, my name is Grant Goff and I'm very happy to be here. I've enjoyed it. It's all the people I've worked with are very, very helpful and easy to get along with. I grew up just north of St. Joe. Do you guys know where that is? I grew up north of St. Joe. I went to St. Joseph Augm. And I've had a, this job is honestly, I've enjoyed it more than I ever, ever enjoyed a job in my life. I've done grounds since I was 15. I've been doing grounds work and I think I'm going to stick with it and something I enjoy doing and I'm very happy to be a part of the team.
Terrific. You're, you're, you're presenting, you're keeping the public face of the park district looking good. So you're an important part of the crew.
Well, welcome, welcome aboard. It's a pleasure to meet you and I hope to see you out in the park.
Good to meet you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Grant.
Yep.
Okay, and we're ready to move on to the uptack report. I see that Laura was, was here this evening.
I want to welcome our two new members of the staff and our two new board members and thank Ms. Cunningham for all the service she's done. And just really happy to be here. So at the last uptack meeting, public marketing and information director Mark Schultz and graphic organizer Lexi gave us a presentation on marketing and how the park district lets everybody know what's going on. We all thought they do an amazing job. We did comment that we think in order to pull in our younger staff members, you might want to do a TikTok thing to get in some lifeguards and camp staff. So that was our big, our big message. Let's see, Corky gave us an update on how the staff has pivoted during the COVID. We also want to thank the staff for that because it's been amazing. Let's see, Tim gave us a presentation about the new nature center pavilion grant and the Blair Park grant. And Andy Russo gave us a presentation quickly updates on the Blair Park bid award and nature center pavilion bid and the interpreted for the interpretive center. And that was about it. Thank you.
Any questions for Laura? I don't see an indication of that, but Laura, I really appreciate your attending. It's, it's always nice to, to have the uptack chair actually at the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Laura.
And that moves us then on to our consent agenda. And for those watching at home that may not be familiar with this, the consent agenda is an agenda of just common items that we have generally reviewed in advance and are non-controversial, or at least we assume so. It is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all the items from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action if that commissioner so chooses. On the consent agenda this evening, approval of the minutes from the March 2nd study session, approval of minutes from the March 9 regular board meeting, receipt of the three monthly departmental reports, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action to receive post issuance tax compliance report. It's an annual action that we have to take. Action to approve resolution 2021 dash 01 to designate committed ending fund balances. And this too is something we do on an annual basis. And lastly, action to approve resolution 2021, excuse me, dash 02 to designate assigned ending fund balances. So under our rules, I at this point ask if there is any of these items that any commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda for a separate action. I do not see any indication of that. So is there somebody willing to move approval of all the items on the consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
I move we to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's, that's been moved and seconded and under the rules of our consent agenda, at this point, there is to be no further discussion. So we will hold a roll call vote on this, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith. Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well. So this carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. So that moves us on to our reports, beginning with financial reports tonight.
Hello, everyone. I'll be sharing the performance of the Urbana Park District for the month of, month of March 2020. So I can share my screen to let you see the financial reports. Can you see this report?
Yep.
Great. Okay. So this first report that I'll be sharing is called the revenue and expenditure report. This report, report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period in this column. The budget for the current period and the preliminary unaudited results for the 11 months ending March 30, March 31st, 2020. Sorry, 2021. Some one, which is what we call the first page of this report, is all of the funds added together except for the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this period were $10,977,000, which is an increase of $90,000 since February. 7.4 million of total revenues were from property taxes. The biggest difference between this year and last year has been in our earned revenues, which is recognized in this fees line, which is made up of program fees and rental charges, which it was 830,000 more last year at the same point in time of the year as it is this year. It was right around a million dollars last year. Expenditures for this period were 9,608,000, which is a change of 436,000 since February. We have a surplus after 11 months, which means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of 1.3 million. And this is about 1.3 million better than our performance at this point in time last year. We were at 37,000 of a excess revenue over expenditures last year and we're at 1,370 this year. We've talked about that at several prior meetings, so I won't get into all of the details, but we did a good job of reducing expenditures to offset our revenue losses. Some two, which is the second page of this report, is only the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this period were $1,641,000 and expenditures were 200, 2,532,000. And expenditures exceed revenues after 11 months, which leaves a net decrease in fund balance in the capital improvements fund of 891,000. And lastly, some three is all funds district-wide, all funds added together. And revenues, oh, excuse me, and note that ending fund balance for the entire district is 16,293,000. And following that are the main summary reports for the working funds, which are the general recreation museum and indoor pool, which I'm happy to answer any questions on before we move on to the next report. Hearing none. We will move on to the treasurer's report. The treasurer's report is a report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, March 31st, 2021. It has all 24 funds listed with where the cash is invested and which banks. So the total investments for February, the amount of cash on hand, sorry, the amount of cash on hand on the last day of March was 15,794,381.84. Sometimes that's the problem with scripts of it is if you forget to update one word, then you're reading last month. Sorry. Of that 15,794,000, 14,000,016,000 is out in investments at some low rate. And that low rate just keeps getting lower. I worked with IPTOLAF, this Illinois Park District Liquid Assets Fund throughout the month of March because we had some CDs in this ladder for the 20 series 2019 A money matured. We had 14 CDs originally, so we've had a couple mature and then three CDs matured in March. And the return for reinvestment was so low that it was at this point 02 rate, which is the cash, the amount, that's the liquid rate. So it really wasn't even worth reinvesting, but we're just going to weekly keep checking because there was one CD that came up that was 0.15%. That I was like, well, if we can get that one, it's better than 0.02%, but by the time that we acted, it was already gone off the market. So it's kind of one of those things. You have to be really quick to the draw when they come up and they have limited amounts of money available. So we'll just keep checking weekly and try to get some of those CDs reinvested. Andy and I worked together to assess our liquidity needs for this 2.4 million that's going to, that's still out in CDs and decided that we at least don't need most of that for another year. So we'd like to keep it reinvested. If we can get a return on it, that's worthwhile. But I mean, if the return is the same as the cash liquid rate, then it's not worth it. So moving on, there were no changes to interfund loans in March. And finally, this last section lists dispersments. And so total dispersments of funds for March was 429,000, which is actually kind of a small, it's a pretty typical like base month, but it's kind of small because we are gearing up for summer. So I'd expect April to be a little bit higher than that. And oh, so now I need to pause. And I present the treasurer's report for, to you for approval.
I guess this is my gig. I hope we accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? Seeing no indication of that, again, with remote attendance, we're required to do a roll call vote, beginning with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting.
Okay. Well, I will, there wasn't a whole lot of activity in the capital budgets, but I will run through those areas that did have, have activity really quickly with you. So in the 2019 A bonds, there was some activity in the Crystal Lake One Way Road project. Sorry, the activity is indicated with this little asterisk symbol. So you can see which items had some level of activity during the month of March. In the 2021 budget, we had in revenue in the tributes line. And we also, the donation that was received in February was transferred to the Urbana Parks Foundation in March. So you can see that transfer taking place here. Those funds were intended for the health and wellness facility that UPF is collecting the funds for. And when we begin that project, we will request those funds back at that time. In the 2020 budget, revenues were received from the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District for the sanitary bridge portion of the Crystal Lake Rehab Project and expenditures were paid for tributes. In the 2019 budget, a transfer from the museum fund was recognized for its contribution to the capital improvements fund for the new interpretive exhibit at the nature center. And expenditures were paid for construction crew projects and also again for that nature center exhibit. In the 2018 budget, expenditures occurred on recreation, small equipment where rescue training equipment was purchased and a kiosk for the Philip Center. And there was no activity at all in the 2017 capital budget. And now Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Sure, I can start with Crystal Lake Park, the rehab project. Should have a landscaping contractor back on site later this month and they'll begin their maintenance work. The contractor will then be back in mid-May to do their plug plantings. And these are primarily on the wetland shelves, the corner of Park and Broadway, within those cobbled areas that you see along the lake with the rock toe and around outlets. And then also within the makeup water feature. And then Stark's actually been on site this week to revise a little bit of the plaza area off of Broadway Avenue. It's to improve accessibility, add seating to the lower and top level of the plaza and a new concrete path will then go in between those two rows of stone to help accommodate that transition and provide the accessible ramp access there. With the lake house area, the new decking that goes from that ramp was installed a couple of weeks ago by Stark. The company that will actually be supplying the boat dock and doing the installation intends to start next week. And assures me that they will be done within two weeks. So that would have us ready to go for our regularly scheduled boating operation on that first weekend of May. With the saline habitat project, I did a second walk with IDNR. This just included their new staff person and an intern that they have for the summer. And the intern wanted to familiarize herself with the project and utilize the project as part of her program experience by holding some educational opportunities this summer. And so I reached out to Savannah and connected her and the intern with potentially doing some programming with our nature camps. So I'm hopeful that, that, that'll be able to happen and they may be able to think of some other ideas as well to help promote and educate what went on there in the last year or two. The contractor for that simple file will actually be back later this month to continue their maintenance for the rock structures and the landscaping. And we'll have periodic visits for the rest of this calendar year. With our Blair Park Ozlad project, we're holding a pre-construction meeting with Midwest Asphalt and ERA tomorrow afternoon at the park. Public information material, I think I discussed maybe last month is being created this week for distribution or display at the park prior to that project kicking off. So this will include a large banner similar to the two we had at Crystal Lake Park. And then we think maybe two yard signs that we can move around the park areas where more of the walking traffic will be. And then we'll do a small flyer distributed to the neighbors to inform them of the work that's about to begin as well as the amenities that will be part of that overall improvement. Hoping to have that information out distributed next week.
Andy, when you do the distribution of information to the neighborhood, how, how do you determine how far you go? What's the, what's the reach?
Well, Kara and I will usually walk for a few hours and do probably, I don't know, what would you say care about four or five blocks in each direction and kind of mark it out and do quadrants and kind of just circle the blocks?
Oh, wow.
We should do a couple hundred flyers.
Exactly. Yeah, we pretty much just go by how many flyers and start closest and move out.
Uh huh.
Depending on how nice of a day it is, maybe. Just usually print about 150 to 250 and distribute those around. Just kind of work our way around.
Good. Thanks.
Katie, as you know, the, the, the Board of Trustees of, of the foundation was very interested in that. Are they able to access that yet? I, I know the website was down.
The, the website is possibly still down, although I was able to access it just now. So we were told it may take up to 48 hours to get it fixed, but it might have moved along.
Okay. Would it be possible to send out an email to the members of the Board of Trustees to just let them know to be patient and it'll, it'll be up?
Sure.
I have noticed since Derek and I talked with Sanford, I, I did get a slew of emails come through. So I, I think the fix is, is happening. Although everything's still been city or park district that I received, but I did get a bunch come through at one time that were sent throughout the day. So I, I think the fixes are, are in the works, but can't promise that until we actually hear that it's complete. So.
Which website was down?
UrbanaParks.org.
UrbanaParks.org was down and then we were also having problems receiving emails outside of the district or the city or, or basically our network.
Well, I think Urbana is back, UrbanaParks.org is up because that's where I, I, I've got another computer in front of me and, and that's where I've got the, the report displayed and that's where I got it.
Okay.
And I did that just at the beginning of the meeting. So.
Yeah, I, I accessed it as well, but I'm also using a VPN and I think there was something in the email about a VPN. I don't know. It's your VPN or any VPN. So.
Yeah, I think we're getting there.
It would have to be the park district VPN, not the VPN if that's what you were using. But circling back to the Crystal Lake project, there was quite a bit of rock that was left in the sort of meadow area between the saline and Cannonball Hill. Is that still going to be addressed at some point here? And the last time I walked through there, which wasn't all that long ago, there were still some more than fist size stones that had been scattered about in there and I don't think they'll grow grass very well.
Yeah, they've, they've had one or two people there for the past week picking up rock and filling up wheel barrels and taking it to the truck. I think they're finishing up the area where they had some piles kind of by Broadway just to the east of the sledding hill this morning and they're getting pretty close and they're going to do some reseating in there in the next week or so too. That'll help kind of smooth it out a little bit more.
Okay, excellent.
They had some issues with weather, mud, and then it was frozen. So it took a little bit for them to get, to get to it, not as quickly as I would have liked. Can wrap up on just a couple other projects that finished up since our last meeting that I'd updated on previously, that transition from acid to CO2 buffering system at both pools finished up last week. Both pools are all set to go with that new and improved system. The dog park, the new surfacing for the parking lot and the lane was placed last week of March. We've identified some areas that are a little, little bit low that were holding water with all the rain we had over the weekend and towards the end of last week. So that contractor's been notified and they're happy to come back out and check on those low areas and help fill them back in, just so we're not holding large puddles there. And then our new concrete within the large dog enclosure was poured. was poured last week and then we had a bit of a delay because of all the, the rain that we got towards the end of the week and then over the weekend. So they're, they're looking to come back probably on Thursday. They're going to check the remaining soil that's left over at the site to see, to make sure it dries enough so they can backfill around their concrete pad and then transport the dirt pile offsite. It's actually going to be used at our old playground area at Crystal Lake Park to help fill that in. So we should have that large enclosure area back open by Thursday or Friday. Happy to answer any other questions?
Seeing no indication of such, then I think we're ready to move on to the executive director's report.
Thank you, Michael. At first you'll notice hopefully the You Belong Here report, there's a wide variety of activities and things going on in that report. Just want to highlight, I think at the study session, we talked a little more in detail about the recent vaccine clinic as being a really unique standout element there, just wonderful. And I believe the second planned one is coming up April 24th. But again, there's a whole lot of other things there. I'll pause to see if there's any questions or comments about anything on that report. Hearing none, we'll continue on. Thank you. And again, it's always a wide variety of things that go into that report. We often discuss that many things really relate to the You Belong Here, but we try to carefully pull out things that might catch the public's interest and be interesting to know more about. My first thing I wanted to share with you all is just to call out and thank LaShonda Cunningham for her wonderful service as a board commissioner. I think tonight's her last official meeting with us. Staff, on behalf of all the staff, just want to say thank you, LaShonda, for our chance to work with you. You know, getting to meet you through the Jetty Rhodes Day activities and all of that. And having you serve on UpDAG, getting to know you through that, your wonderful leadership as chair that organization. And certainly your full service in term with the board. It's just amazing to staff how much we can see how much you've learned. Just learning the Illinois park system is an achievement in and of itself. It's very complicated. There's a lot of moving parts. Few people really understand it. We had a little chance to talk with LaShonda at the policy study group just prior to the meeting and I think she commented just, you know, just understanding the budgets and seeing all the work and goals and everything that everybody's done. And so again, just want to say thanks to you and we have a, just a great board staff team and wish you well in your endeavors. You have a lot on your plate coming up and we're all supporting you in your next steps. And we know that we'll still be working together. So it's not like goodbye. It's probably just another hello. But I did want to start the report out with that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Just, I'm never a person of few words. It's been a great six years. So much has happened, so many great things. I've learned a lot. Really excited about the future for the organization and just all the people that have really grown and really have gravitated to the slogan You Belong Here. I know I've talked heavily about that over the past few years. But I will honestly say that I've seen a lot of growth and I know I've said this a million times before, but I really have. There's still work to do and I have no doubt that, you know, the next new commissioner and my fellow commissioners and all of you at UPD will continue to work very well together. It will be different for me for a little while. Just, you know, not being at meetings, but you know, I'm always as a chair with people, just a phone call away, a text away, an email away. You know, I won't be too far, but you know, I'm really, really appreciative of this time. And just to work the friendship, the partnership, just all the relationships that, you know, that I've had built over this time and, you know, predating to, to the board of DAG. And, you know, Jetty Rhodes Day, I mean, Jetty Rhodes Day will still be there. And just so many other, the policy meetings, just everything. And, you know, just when I started, you know, on the board, I wasn't really like, you know, pretty, I wasn't as sharp as I am now, but you know, I owe that all to you. You guys are really, really great in your role and that is to be commended. Things to us is it just shows what great leadership you all have. And yes, I was teasing Katie about the financial reports that, you know, looking at that, it initially was very, very overwhelming to see all those reports, but over time, you know, it's not, I wouldn't say the highlight of everything was, you know, but I commend her with, you know, being able to keep up with all the financials and, and making it visible for us people that have bad eyes. But thank you all very, very much. It has been a great ride.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say this during the commissioner's comments, but I, I, I'll, I'll just jump in now. LaShonda, I think you've really set a terribly high bar for any new person coming in. You, you've just, you've just been the, the, the perfect new, new team member. You, you listened, you paid attention, you, you became part of the group really fast and not, not everybody, not everybody does that. And so we benefited from, we benefited from your, from your personality, but we also benefited from your experience that you brought in, brought in from life. And I think you did a really good job of representing your sort of constituency, if you will, and yet all of Urbana as well. So really, Sajid's got a lot to live up to. So you did, you did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for pushing us.
Exactly. And this is, it's been a two-way street here and we have gotten so much from you that has really changed the way this organization goes about things. And for that, we are very, very appreciative.
I don't think that park district would be where it is without you, LaShonda.
Thank you, Roger.
Again, LaShonda, we just want to say thanks. And I know this for a fact, all of our former commissioners are still very well connected to us. We hear from everybody and being connected is critical. We love that because it tells us they're still connected. I've had a number of them ask me, can, can I still say we? And I say absolutely, it's always we. So the same goes for you too. I'll move ahead and we can come back to anything else under that, under commissioner comments later. Just wanted to report staff in the whole steering committees working really intent on the health and wellness facility. Just on the fundraising, it's just drilling down daily, weekly. Everyone is just really doing a phenomenal job. It's just, it's overwhelming at, at all the conversations and all the effort, the work that's going in across the community. So obviously it shows, I think we're getting good responses. As you know, the public phase will be launched fairly soon. So more and more people will hear about it and anyone who's listening tonight who might've heard these cryptic updates, we're probably gonna just blast over and over all the great things coming very soon for Urbana and our plans. One of the highlights we had this week, we were able to talk with a local artist. Our fundraising group CCS has encouraged us to think of tangibles for that public phase. Often you're familiar with brick campaigns, maybe pickets on fences, stair treads, things like that. As you would imagine, the leadership team really wanted something really unique and special. So I think we went out and engaged with the local artist that has experience working in community art expressions. And so we're working on at least a concept of potentially trying to add something to the facility that'll really be a wow space that will allow the public to support that effort through their own fundraising and, and giving to that project. So stay tuned. We'll have some neat and new information coming up. And just again, appreciate everybody working on that steering committee. They're just knocking it out of the park. Related to health and wellness, Thursday, we have another site visit going over to Carmel, Indiana to check out their Monon Community Center. We've been told it has some interesting features and some of them mechanical systems, things like that. So we're going to continue to do that. We also have upcoming next visit later to Sycamore Park District and the North Brook Park District to do the same. Their newer facilities, so we wanted to check out, talk to their staff. I'm sure the rec staff is starting to pivot now into operational program, customer base sort of thinking. So it's really exciting to move from a concept idea to the realities of providing service. So stay tuned on that. On the trail efforts going forward, the KRT team is going to make a visit Friday. We're going to go over and visit near Bloomington, Illinois, the route, new Route 66 trail portion that's been constructed over by Funk's Grove. So we're excited to go out and look at infrastructure. They have some bridges, things that we want to check out. Obviously we're looking at bridges at Crystal Lake. So anything we can learn there certainly will be applied. But it's a great way for that group to stay educated, find out who's offering what. One of our long-term visions is to be able to hopefully connect our network someday with the Bloomington Normal Network. So this would all be part of that. So very exciting there. We had some frustrating efforts this past week as well. As you are probably aware, there was a number of earmark opportunities. In fact, my, my section of the board report, I went on and on about it. There were two main ones. There's several things moving, but the legislative ones. And then the one we heard through the nature, the Trails Conservancy that was Trails and Infrastructure. And the bottom line, Derek, Karen and I sort of racked our brains at the last hours, the 11th hour to realize that we really couldn't make an application. They're just very complicated. There's only a very short window of about two weeks. And I think the shortcomings for me were probably one of the key provisions is you already needed to probably have some discussion going with your legislators. And obviously for park districts, that's a little more challenging. I think cities and larger government units might have an advantage there. So in the end, we just weren't able to apply. There are many, many moving parts. We had several key projects that we were thinking would fit really well. And in the end, we just were not able to meet the, really the requirements to be able to apply. So we do want to, I do want to kind of share that information with our legislators so that any forward, any rollouts of any other earmarks or any, you know, efforts at the federal level to bring new resources. You know, somehow they've got to trickle down to allow local units like ours. I'm assuming school districts, you know, would be challenged with these sort of formats. So we're appreciative, all the work and the infrastructure is needed. We need more, but we've got to be able to access it in a timely manner. So we'll, we'll share that message and be hopeful that we'll get other opportunities. There's still a few other loose opportunities out there that we're, you know, tracking and trying to keep track of. But I did want to report, we know that the city of Urbana is submitted one of their priorities with their legislative contacts that would include a design and engineering study for the extension of the KRT that would go to Lincoln Avenue. So again, it's in, in their priorities, not maybe their top priority. And again, the legislators are only allowed to select a few projects from their whole, you know, from all, everything submitted. So you can imagine the competition's just unbelievable. But we're grateful for that. And then through CC first, we do have a meeting set up April 21st. We're going to be talking with Senator Duckworth and her staff on the 22nd. We'll be able to, working on conversations with Senator Durbin and Representative Davis. And we're also looking at state leaders too. So we're trying to basically book as many of those meetings within those two days that we can to present. One of the things I'll be presenting to Senator Duckworth and her staffer help on the KRT. So we'll at least get those requests in, but again, it's not in a request for funding, you know, like a earmark application would do. So we'll keep working on that. Yes.
Was part of the, was part of the problem with these grants that we didn't get the information soon enough?
Well, I think I'm going to say yes to that, although I think everybody probably got about the same two weeks or so, two and a half weeks.
It wasn't that it didn't trickle down to us. It was that everybody had about the same window. Okay.
Right. And I, you know, to be fair, I think they're really promoting shovel ready. So, you know, within a few weeks, if you actually had a shovel ready project, they qualified, you theoretically could advance that. But I think the key, one of the keys was the conversation, support, or at least awareness with your legislators. You had to work through a very complicated system. You had to get codes, you know, to even get to the application. So yeah, it was very, very, I've never experienced anything quite like that. And so we just probably need to try to learn from this experience, be ready. Something I would recommend we do is get our annual list of projects that we promote and make sure we get them to our legislators so that we can at least initiate that. Often, you know, we don't do that or we wait until, you know, we're asked to or IAPD thinks it's a good time, you know, to make a push, at least at the state level. I think that's just standard practice. Now we need to get our capital plans, which we have and just get it in a format so we can share it with legislators and then probably do follow-up to make sure they received it if they have any questions. Again, as much as we're able to. At these busy times too, I'm sure they're overloaded and they may not be able to get to all their constituent groups. So I'm sure it's challenging for them and we'll probably learn a little more when we do get to talk with the legislators around the 21st, the 22nd. As I think I reported in my report, I think we get about 20 minutes with Senator Duckworth. And that's probably shared with about 12 groups. So we each get about a minute. So again, boiling your message down, being ready is going to be super critical.
But again. This is speed talking.
Next week, that's my goal is just memorize that in my sleep. So.
Yeah, no kidding.
Try to work on that. So I mentioned CC first, that's coming up. Back to Urbana, obviously the Perkins Road Plan is shaping up. Staff's doing a terrific job. We're starting to work with the sanitary district to determine what, if any, level of ongoing financial support, you know, we can imagine. I think our suggestion is things that keep, you know, the collection, keep the site whole, keep it in good shape, a reasonable ask. So we, we have to work and coordinate that. So we'll share more information as, as we get that. We're still working on the Brookins lease. I think we had a discussion today in the athletic field study, which I'll touch next. I think we're probably going to have that conversation too about maybe longer term interest with any of the land that could be available. We have ball fields, as you know, surrounding that whole super block area and would like to at least start that discussion of what is the long-term interest on at least the land. We know we'll have a facility that's in the works to, you know, plan to move to out of the Brookins facility, but there's a lot of valuable properties around there and we want to have those discussions now while it's early and see how, you know, how we can work on those. I would expect an extension of our, probably of our current terms, but we'd like to at least engage with, you know, long, long-term opportunities. And the reason why, obviously there, we've already invested, they're needed. But to further out, make us eligible for grants or any resources that could be available, certainly want to up our chances by owning. Long-term leases can do that, but again, just want to know what, what we can count on for the future, which leads into the next topic of the athletic field study. We're engaging with the Smith Group to get a proposal to give us really kind of a three-point look across the district. Inventory and understanding analysis of all of our fields, wherever they are. A discussion of what is going to be lost at Prairie Park and what's going on there and who the user groups in the Brookins Prairie. And then ultimately what needs to be planned for, for the future at Weaver Park. And I think the assumptions are, you know, we'll probably still need to rely on every existing field. There might be new opportunities like the small ball field, the T-ball field at Preston Williams Elementary School that's currently not utilized. So again, a discussion with the school district so that we don't have to go and recruit, recreate or build or expand new ball fields if we have existing sites that could certainly serve us. Things we're also looking at is, you know, proximities and adjacencies, connectivity, parking. So making sure that things are relatively positioned so that you can rely on hopefully consolidated, you know, parking areas, maybe connection paths, you know, that will get you to where you need to go. So a lot of good efforts that will be coming up. We just started that. And as you all know, it's kind of ironic to the staff group, that's kind of what started our discussion. That's kind of what started our discussion that led to the health and wellness facility because as we continue to look in that Prairie Brookings, uh, Weaver area, realized that our base facility at the Brookings Gym really wasn't a base facility. We couldn't count on that in the future. And that sort of need to be galvanized and put in place. And then the rest of the things would at least seem to fall into better place. So that's the strategy we're working on and, um, our discussions have been very fruitful. We have a super team working on that too. And so you'll be hearing more updates about that. And then lastly, I just want to thank our staff that's working with one of our UPDAC members, Anita, um, Amida Sinha is doing a study on our larger ecological parks. And I know recreation, marketing, planning and operations staff, everyone's been working, offering their two bits, uh, survey-based, um, and then she'll help pull the study together. So I know that's a little extra effort. Just wanted to thank the staff team and also recognize her efforts. Um, she really believes in our team and certainly could probably find a way to do this work in many other ways, but is wanting to work with us. So we look forward to that. And, uh, the reports that'll come after that. I can answer any questions if there's any, any. Hearing none, I don't have anything else to add, Michael.
Okay, well, move on to the president's report and, uh, let's talk a little bit about the upcoming meetings. Uh, what would normally be our study session date, uh, for May is, uh, the joint meeting with the Parks Foundation. Same time, same channel. And, uh, LaShonda, I hope you'll at least consider attending that. You will still be officially on the board at that point. And this is an important meeting for us to, to, uh, and unfortunately in the COVID times, we won't be able to do it in person, but to to have some interaction between the, uh, the trustees of, of the foundation and, and the board members of, of the district. It's always good to, uh, have some give and take in that regard. Then on May eleventh, we will have our annual meeting. So that is, that is when we actually, uh, seat the new commissioners. There'll be two, uh, two people starting six, six-year terms at that meeting. The, the selection of our officers for the coming year. Our, and a, a number of, of housekeeping matters of, of pointing, uh, people to the various positions, uh, for the coming year in terms of, uh, the, uh, FOIA person, uh, arranging our study groups, et cetera. So there's a pretty full list of those things to do at the annual meeting. And after that, we will have then a regular meeting, which as I understand it, is likely to include some, uh, some bid approvals. There may be other things that will be on the agenda at that point. So it'll be a, a time of changeover.
Michael, have we gotten the, um, the vote totals yet?
No, we do not. The vote totals were updated on Friday. The Facebook page indicated there would be additional vote updates on Monday. When I looked on Monday, uh, the, the word was that they weren't going to do any more updates until the deadline of the twentieth of April. So we will not know. I've seen no indication of how many outstanding ballots there are. Yep. So I, I think it'll be another week before we know for sure, uh, what the outcome is. And, uh, that's about all I had in terms of the president's report. Unless there were any other questions. Hearing none, let's move on to our liaison reports and the, the finance study group, uh, last met on the twenty-sixth of March. So we've already discussed most of the things that, that we covered in, in that meeting. And we will be meeting again on the seventh of May. So in between the, the joint meeting with the Parks Foundation and, and, uh, the, uh, annual meeting in May. UPD, uh, policy study group. Anything to report there?
Sure, I can report. So we met, um, before our forward meeting today at five thirty. We, we reviewed, um, sections five and six of the Urbana Park District Policy Manual. We don't have any recommended changes. There is one sort of question we're exploring related to prevailing wages and whether or not we still have to post in the newspaper. So Kelsey is going to, um, look into that. We, Katie thought maybe it had changed that we do not have to. So other than that, there are no changes recommended to the, um, to the board policy manual. We did review what's called quality-based selection policy, which is something that will be added and on the agenda in May. That's required when we receive federal funds. Um, and so it's specifically as an example, when I dot receives ITEP money, that's federal funds and we have to follow this process. So, um, this policy, there's no real wiggle room. We just have to do with the federal government outline.
And what does it entail?
Uh, it's, I'm not the best person to describe it, but it's, it, it is, um, it's a, Derek, can you take this?
So it, it's a federally mandated qualitative-based selection process for engineers for, uh, projects that are administered through IDOT. And it requires that we advertise a certain way that we score, uh, applications receive a certain way and that we negotiate contracts a certain way. And there's, um, several agencies that have already adopted, uh, these policies. They're all remarkably similar because it's pretty much verbatim out of the Bureau of Roads manual that I dot publishes. So it's, uh, it's kind of what we have to do to, 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 to work with the ITEP program.
Okay. So we just have to familiarize ourselves with the hoops we have to leak through.
And you'll see it in the May board packet, uh, in full detail. We just, they brought it to our attention. I think we have to. Yeah. Uh, and then the other thing, you know, we've, we, we discussed or just had a look at, we had asked for, you know, we've, we've talked about this before, updating our mission vision statement. And so Alex had put together, um, what other park districts are doing and, and just as a reference point. And so we had just a conversation about, about that and, and ways we might improve ours. But we're in a pretty good space. So but trying to link a little bit more strongly to our strategic, um, plan and the pillars. Making sure things are represented. So we didn't make any decisions. It was just a conversation. So that's all.
Oh, thank you, Meredith. And moving on to Urbana Parks Foundation Representative Roger.
Yeah, we met yesterday. Um, we spent a lot of time talking about donor recognition. Um, uh, staff have been looking at, uh, uh, pieces that can go on the wall, um, and, and how that might be done. And I think that the, the foundation was pretty excited about the, uh, the, the ideas that were brought forward. We talked again about how the nomination process is for nominating trustees to the, uh, to the, to the board. I, I think, I think we, we, we have a, a system in place, but every time there's not somebody at a meeting, you kind of have to go over it again. So that's what we did. And, um, and then, and then we ta-talked very briefly, uh, about, uh, what the future of the foundation might be. Uh, and how we might look toward, um, uh, uh, longer-term fundraising. After this particular health and wellness project is done, uh, to, uh, to, to give the foundation more of a, a steady income, uh, through the, throughout the years. So, um, that was about it.
Any questions for Roger on that? Okay, then let's move on to UPDAC Planning Study Group.
We're still cooking from, from before. So we have, we haven't met. We don't, we don't really need to meet yet for a while.
All righty, then we're ready to move on to old business. And the only item under old business was anything that had been removed from the consent agenda. Since there was nothing, we are on to the new business for the evening. And, uh, first item A is Action on Ordinance twenty-twenty dash oh-three. I said supposed to be twenty-twenty-one dash oh-three.
Yes, it is supposed to be.
Katie, are you leading on the next three items? I think ABC will let you take lead.
First of all, the number is correct in our documents back at the office. So we'll have to make the correction on that one that you signed, Michael. But as far as the packet goes, that's okay.
Well, the, the ordinance itself has twenty-twenty-one, that shows three on it.
Oh, okay. It's just the agenda was wrong?
I'm sorry. It's the agenda that, that had the issue.
Okay.
And the suggested motion also has that problem.
Okay. Sorry about that. So this is just a, this particular action item is just a standard action that the board takes every year to kind of flush out and even out whatever needs to be done to finish the end of the year for audit. And it usually winds up really just being the transfers between funds. Um, unless for some reason, some item of spending went over or whatever, which that didn't happen this year. So all of the items listed in the revision to the budget appropriation ordinance are just the transfers, which is just a standard action that the board must take at the end of each year. Happy to answer any questions about any of the specific transfers that are mentioned if, if you have any, but otherwise, um, I'll leave it to you.
So were there any, um, any questions? Or comments? And hearing none, do we, uh, have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three?
I moved to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-one oh-three revising the combined budget and appropriation ordinance.
That's been moved and I believe seconded by Meredith. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, we are required to do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And that carries unanimously. Takes us to item B, uh, Action on Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash oh-three to approve, uh, annual compensation actions.
So the board had an executive session to review, uh, the specific individual staff salary recommendations at the March regular board meeting prior to the March regular board meeting. And there was a couple of small changes to that, but not enough to warrant another executive session. So we, so I sent an email with what those changes were just earlier today. But now that I realize we've been having email issues, I'm not sure anybody received that email.
I got it.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. Oh, okay. Good. All right. So.
It's just if anybody wanted to respond to it, it wouldn't have gone through.
Yes, good points. Yeah. So I, I guess if anybody did feel the need to have further discussion about that, I think that the appropriate motion would be to table this and we'll schedule a special meeting, but otherwise, um, the motions as stands and the overall approach has been discussed the last several months along with, um, our consultants and our new salary and wage study and, and approach. So, you know, I think we're all on the same page about all of that. It was just the very specific line items. If anybody felt the need to discuss those further, we could schedule a special meeting.
And all those are covered in the resolution?
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right, then I'll move, um, passage of resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two annual compensation actions.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Uh, hearing none, do a roll call vote again, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That carries unanimously. And we move then to item C to receive the preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, that's me also. Um, I, so at our last finance study group meeting, we went through every, uh, summary page for the funds and detail. Um, I typically do a, uh, we, not me, our staff team will typically do, uh, major changes type presentation to the board, usually at the June board meeting, sometimes the June study session, but usually the June board meeting. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time tonight really actually even talking about this, but we do feel it's important to get something in the board's hands before the end of the fiscal year, really before the next fiscal year starts on May first. That you know that the work is being done, that it's in process. Typically I would have received the final levy extension from the county before now. And it would have been worked into this document. That hasn't happened since the new county clerk took office. So for the last three years, we haven't had the levy in the work that we do for this preliminary budget, which makes it a lot harder to, um, continue our work. And I had really hoped this year would be different because I was emailing with their office, um, two weeks ago, and he said he thought he would have it, but he didn't. So, um, that was a little bit disappointing for me, but so I it's almost like a preliminary preliminary budget because it's so not quite done yet. There's still quite a bit of stuff that needs to get finalized. The levy, the extension needs to get finalized. Now that the boards voted on the, um, salary recommendations, all of those will get actualized in the budget as well. Which is, that's a standard thing that I always do after the April board meeting. And then any other changes. So I just want you to know that I've given you a document. It's, it's very preliminary. It's definitely going to change. I'm happy to go over the summary pages really quickly with you just so that, um, you can understand what you're looking at. So this page right here is what we call someone. It's, you know, maybe not presented with all the lines spaced out and everything like you see on the monthly reports, but it is still the same information. So, um, this is last year's budget. And this is the, the FY twenty-two budget that we're preliminary budget that we're working on. Um, so you can kind of compare year to year here. This is where our current activity is through today, which should be pretty similar to the information you received in the monthly report, although I ran them at different times. So it could be slightly different. Depending on the moment I happen to run that report. But really these two columns I think are the ones that are most important to kind of have your head around, which is last year's budget versus this year's budget. These two columns are actual activity. So FY twenty activity and then FY twenty-one year-to-date activity, which really at, at the point I ran this is only through the end of March. So you can see for the operating funds, we're looking at a budget of around twelve million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and, um, of revenues and thirteen million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in expenditures, which are pretty similar to the prior year. You can also see, um, the revenues do take into account, um, COVID. So staff estimated COVID, uh, phase four recommendations into the programs that they're offering. So that's why you see that we have, uh, reduction in fees here compared to prior year budgets, but we are planning on operating programs. So it was a, you know, difficult estimate to make, but staff are fairly conservative. So we're hoping for the best there. And then the other reason that this the expenditure side is higher than the prior year is because of the resolution that the board passed tonight to assign one million dollars of, as a transfer out of the general fund to the capital improvements fund for capital improvements. So that our transfers out are quite a bit higher than, um, typical. And that's on purpose. So that's just what I wanted to emphasize is we're about a million dollars higher in expenditures than the prior year budget, but that's because we increased our transfers on purpose. And it's just a one-time transfer. That's not something that will be maintained in perpetuity. So that leaves us with a reduction in fund balance at the end of the year of about one point two million. And a lot of this, um, this extra two hundred thousand, you know, three hundred thousand is because a lot of times it's the difference between budgets and appropriations. We have We have the budget document for a government is really a legal document, and you cannot exceed it. So it's different than with a corporation where it's just, you know, a guess and and you do the best you can. Well, we legally cannot exceed it, and so there are some funds, especially our smaller funds, that we budget the full fund just in case something, an opportunity arises where we need access to those funds to spend them. So, for example, our land acquisition fund, you know, we may not have a parcel of property that we intend on buying in the next year, but we need to appropriate that entire fund to be able to buy it if a, if a opportunity arose. So that's a good example, and so this one million is going to be that transfer out, this reduction in our total ending fund balance. And then this other three hundred thousand is really typically just all of those other funds added together that we're appropriating to spend, even though we may not actually have the plans to do so at the moment. Some two is the capital improvements fund, and we're appropriating to spend all of the remaining bond monies out of the twenty nineteen A budget, which is why there's quite a bit of a reduction in fund balance here. This fund typically, if you look at the ten-year history of this fund, it carries about a million dollars fund balance typically. If you don't include these large bond issuances, and so that's kind of where we'll get back to whenever we're done spending that twenty nineteen A bond money, and that's really that million dollars in ending fund balance is really just the accumulation of prior year bond monies that we just haven't gotten around to spending yet, because we have about three years to spend those. So it's just the the prior year bond monies that we're waiting to spend in the future. So the whole point of this fund is to spend every single dollar of it on capital improvement. So really, you want that fund balance to eventually get down to zero, but it's kind of one of those where new monies are coming in while the olds are being spent, so you're always going to carry a little bit of the balance. Some three, if we were to have this budget going forward, we would have an ending fund balance for the whole district of around six point two million, which is really back to our our normal year. Right now, we have a lot because of that extra bond money, but once we're done spending it, it'll be kind of back to normal for the park district for our That's all I know right now about the prelim budget, it's not anything you need to vote on to approve tonight. We don't have to take legal action on that document until July.
Any questions for Katie on this? Okay, then I think we're ready to move on to item D, action to accept the UPD climate action resilience education and sustainability plan.
Michael, just a quick comment to say thanks to Karen Savannah for their excellent leadership. We had a very aggressive, very active group that worked on the plan, and they're, they just did a terrific job and kind of been a very condensed time walking us through all the critical things. There was a lot of openness, a lot of good input opportunities. One thing I just want to comment that Zoom allows us is group editing, that was a new experience, walking through documents that you can literally edit with the whole group as you go. But again, I think the quality of the report stands, and again, thanks to them, and turn it over.
Thanks, Tim.
We're, we're glad to be back again, I think that the first time we talked to you all was around October. And we have definitely come a very long way since then. I just wanted to start out by saying that this is not final, and we hope that you have some comments for us or some changes that can be made to just make it overall better and to fit anything that commissioners have thoughts on. And Savannah and I are just going to bounce back and forth and talk very quickly about each of the chapters, we hope only about ten or fifteen minutes for the sake of your time. So we have an executive summary page, and then what's most important is talking about how this plan aims to create a better future for all of Urbana. And part of that is all the people that were involved in the creation of this plan. So we have listed our commissioners and our steering committee, which is a fair number of park district staff. A lot of people showed interest in this from all three departments, which is pretty amazing. And then staff groups as a whole, UPDAC and the community members. And something that I think is pretty impressive too is a lot of the advisor interviews that we conducted. And just some very knowledgeable and very important people in the fields of climate action, sustainability. Things that are related to conserving energy and and things like that. And then we have our table of contents also. And then the first chapter Savannah will just talk briefly about.
I'm sorry, we felt we needed to preface our plan with some sort of purpose statement to really make this accessible and give some of the explanation about why, why are we doing this? So you see a brief purpose statement here, followed by a kind of a description of our process and the timeline. So you can see there that, you know, we're showing our public input sessions, all of our presentations to different, you know, board groups and commissioners, I'm sorry, UPDAC, natural areas committee, stuff like that. And then on the next page, our equity inclusion and justice statement. So tying this plan into our you belong here culture and inclusion strategy by identifying some populations of concern and how climate change can impact those populations differently. So again, just some information to preface the the real goals and objectives of the plan. We really feel like equity, inclusion and justice should be, you know, threaded through everything that we do here. So we're just taking a moment to call that out. And I believe you had an opportunity to see most of this text at our previous presentation to the board. Our vision and value statements, so here we start with relating our plan to the climate statement for the National Recreation and Parks Association, N R P A. We're also including their statement in our appendix session, section, because we feel it is really relevant to what we're doing here. And then some of this structure, as far as our vision and values, have come from Eco America, which is another really wonderful resource. But basically, we're focusing on shared values, so that's one way that we can further the conversation about climate change and, you know, helping people to understand that the benefits that a plan like this can reap are not just benefits to the park district. They benefit, you know, our shared values as a community.
Chapter four is an introduction to the three planned pillars. So you'll notice that there's a lot of parallels between this plan and the strategic plan intentionally in the ways that they read and the ways that they work together. And the way that the three planned pillars have an icon and a color and an overall theme or topic is how we move forward with creating our goals, because when you think about, I mean, just climate change itself, it can quickly get overwhelming, or it seems like there's either too much to do, or you're not sure where to start. And so these pillars helps start to organize some of these thoughts in in the coming pages. And the next chapter, which is those goals and objectives, is by far the longest. And I won't go through all of the different goals. But something new since the last time we talked to you is these priority levels. And so there's a very brief key at the beginning here, as we try to prioritize. And the team decided to go with like the levels in being three, two, or one of our oak leaves in our logo. And that's because we didn't want to go with dollar signs or stars or numbers per se. And I'll go into, I'll skip ahead to chapter six, where we talk a little bit more about what they mean. Because they are kind of unique to this plan, so bear with me as I skip through. First, the goals and objectives for communicating climate action. You'll see there's four overarching, there's the fifth overarching goal, sorry. And then for protecting and strengthening our natural environment. A lot of these were the same as when we talked to you all, but refined. So, for example, we talked, like Nancy mentioned, some alternative de-icing techniques or products that we could go into. I know that Michael had questions about, you know, how we calculate emissions and how we're making an impact as far as emissions go. And also Roger gave us some resources on plant hardiness zones and planting things that are resilient to climate change as precipitation and weather and heat change also. So you can see why that's the longest chapter, because that's really the the content of how we accomplish things and make an impact overall. So chapter six is the plan implementation, and basically it just discusses how this is going to get done. So we don't just make a pretty document that goes nowhere. And first of all, there are staff groups assigned to each of the the different objectives, so it already has someone in charge of moving that forward. Also, we plan to do an annual review, like we do a strategic plan before we do annual goals, so that we can see what we've accomplished and what we want to work towards in the next year. And then third is this prioritization system that we developed. And basically, there's three things that we outlined here. But also, there's a whole slew of things that are going to affect how we accomplish things. So for example, in the final paragraph, we mention capital improvement schedule or grants that come about or partnerships. So we can work together with other entities that are working on climate action initiatives. But three leaves means that the community prioritized it in the top one or two of the second survey, so they said that it was important. It has a shorter term implementation, which means that it could be a little easier to achieve, and it has a lower cost. Two is in the middle, and one leaf means that it wasn't as high as of a priority by the community. It has a little bit longer term implementation, so it could take more time, and it could also mean that has a higher cost. And so this was just a way to begin wrapping our head around what we should do first. When there's a whole list of things to work towards.
So I'm really proud of all the work we did in the goal and objective setting, but as an environmental educator, I am really pleased also with the last part of this document. Firstly, with the glossary of key terms, you know, communication and education is a strong component of this plan, and the plan itself is a communication and education piece. We want it to be very accessible such that, you know, people are not alienated by the terminology that we're using, right? So some of this terminology that comes along with this whole, you know, big ball of yarn can be intimidating or, you know, unclear. So this is our attempt to, you know, provide some clarity and some education here. So the, these two pages you see as our glossary of terms. Many of these are found within the plan, but some of the terms are not necessarily in the plan, but they're, you know, we felt they were really important still to understand.
Good idea.
Thank you. And then this section, climate change concepts. So we did get this idea from the city of Urbana's climate plan. They, you know, very explicitly include a section on how climate change works, right? How how it happens, what are the mechanisms? How is it different from global warming? So in this section, you know, people who read this can get a little bit of a stronger understanding. And this is all relatable more than just to the park district, as I said, you know, we want this plan to be able to be utilized by other people, other park districts, other entities, you know, might want to use this for their own climate action. We are citing a lot of our sources, hopefully all of them that are necessary. But certainly, if you see, you know, a statement or something that you feel needs a source to be cited, we can still add that in at any time. We're kind of focusing on how how the climate change relates to us here in Illinois, kind of first and foremost. So in, you see this section, there's one health, climate change and pandemics, and then there's another section on the screen, electric vehicles and equipment, electricity sources and emissions. These sections are in the plan because they came up during our talks with staff and with our community partners, like the Champagne County Climate Coalition, who felt it was important to give some more clarity about some of these interconnections.
And so like Savannah mentioned, we're talking about some of the impacts of climate change, and a lot of it is centered on what's happening locally and in Illinois, because it is happening here and now. But we also wanted to show that you can start with talking about impacts in Urbana and east central Illinois. But it expands, and we talk about the state, the region. And then we also eventually get to global and national impacts, so hopefully there's something that can resonate with someone, whether it's the effects on oceans or plants or higher temperatures, greater precipitation or more extreme precipitation, precipitation rather. And, you know, some people are are more interested or maybe more affected by some of the impacts than others. But they're all important and to mention in our plan.
And just a final note on our sources, you know, anybody who wants to do more of their own climate change research or wants to delve deeper than what we have here in the plan. I'm just really proud of this list of references and sources. Thank you to those of you who shared your sources and references with us. There is a lot of really valuable information out there, and so, you know, I think this is a really good look at the the reputable science that's behind this plan. And so with that, you have our draft of the CARES plan for your comment. And we're also interested in any specific ideas that you might have about the plan's rollout. You know, we'd like to formulate a press release and work with Mark, the marketing and public information manager, to spread the word about the plan, but any ideas are are welcome.
What kind of timeline are you looking at, Savannah?
Well, we're approaching Earth Day, and so we thought that it would be really wonderful to at least make an announcement that correlates with Earth Day.
Okay, that's, that was going to be my suggestion that you that you find it a day, and that's perfect, that's exactly what I would have suggested, so great, you're way ahead of me.
But if, you know, if you think that we should do an open Zoom program or something to share the plan or, you know, create a a short YouTube video or something, those are the kinds of suggestions I'd love to hear from you.
I just have a quick question, I, overall, I think it's fantastic, I think it looks amazing. I just have a question about equity and injustice in chapter two, where it says populations of color. I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure about the wording, I know some people say people of color. But that could is so, I don't know.
No, I I hear what you're saying, LaShonda. I believe that we were borrowing this language from the tool that we were using, which was the Environmental Protection Agency's environmental justice screening and mapping tool. But we can change that if you have any recommendations, we'd love to hear them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if population of minority sounds more appropriate or just thinking and trying to think about the you belong here at the same time, that I just don't want people to take it out of context in this particular situation or this, you know, with the climate change. But otherwise, I think it looks amazing, I just don't want to send the wrong message for whoever decides to pick it up and read it or happens to come across it, and that could be for any minority, it does, you know, not just, but I just want, you know, that's just my personal opinion. But yeah, other than that, I think it looks amazing.
Thank you, no, that's really valuable advice, I appreciate your feedback.
Yeah, and we could just look further into the tool too, and maybe be more specific about what it was trying to outline and why the effects are greater.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? And it's someone prepared to make a motion that we accept this plan as our starting point for this.
I move that we accept their Benham Park District Climate Action Resilience Education and Sustainability Plan.
Second.
Then moved in second and any discussion on the point? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And so, we have our, we have our plan to begin with. So, fantastic. An awful lot of work went into this and I'm very pleased to see this step taken and that this will be an actively used plan going into the future.
Thanks so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yes. I think perhaps our silence in response to this is we are in awe of what you produced. And I think also we trust you to to work on the rollout in a in a way that will be productive and constructive and creative.
Well, if you have ideas for inclusion or anything like that, please do send send along a message to me.
Right, and the whole point is that the more that we talk about climate change and its impacts and the ways that we can mitigate it, then the more comfortable people feel and the bigger impact that we'll all have in the long term, right? Because it can still be kind of an inaccessible or intimidating term. And so, if anything comes of this and it's just that more people know and are talking about it, then I think we will have really started a great thing.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, that brings us to item E, action on revisions to the 2019, 2020 and 2021 capital improvement budgets.
And he's ready to go.
Yes, I am sharing my screen now. Can everyone see that? Okay.
Yep.
I cut off a little bit on my screen. Okay, so we'll note, Michael had pointed out earlier today, we have the correct revision number on our headings, but the date needs to get adjusted and that'll get changed for the next revision opportunity, which is usually in July. So, I talked with Katie and we'll work on making sure that reflects appropriately next time. So, I apologize for that. Starting with nineteen, in the revenue section, you'll see that we have updated donations for Crystal Lake Park from the foundation. And then we reduced our transfer from museum fund. This was for the Take a Walk exhibit. As we closed out that project, we had some remaining contingency and did not need that full one hundred and twenty-two thousand. Both those items then are reflected in the expenditure section. For Meadowbrook Park House repairs, we had a little bit of money left over that we have now released to contingency. Same with the equipment section, about fifty dollars. That's left from the Carl Mobile Park Van, which is now we call Urbana. And that's been released to contingency as well. And then in our general contingency section here, you'll see we've pulled out thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That's an item that is now set for the Blair Park construction contract. In 2020, we're at revision number two. And here in the revenue section, we're now showing our Blair Park Ozlad Grant Funds. And then the sixty-eight thousand dollars is from the sanitary district as part of that IGA for work associated with their bridge at Crystal Lake Park for the rehab project. In the expenditure section, we've split the ADA line. That was at sixty-five thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand of that goes towards the Blair Park Ozlad Project. And then ten thousand dollars remains for general ADA expenditures. And with the contingency section, we moved fifty thousand dollars that's assigned to the construction contract for Blair Park. And then we had a nineteen hundred dollar expenditure that was associated with the Blair Park improvements. We had storm inlet cleaning that was completed a couple of months ago. In 2021, this is revision number one. We had an increase in bond sale revenue. And then, as Katie had mentioned a little bit earlier in the meeting, the three thousand dollar donation that was received by the park district that will then be transferred to the Foundation for Health and Wellness. And then now we're identifying our project budget for a museum grant. So, that's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant amount with our, what I'd call, I guess, our local match from our museum fund, fifty-eight thousand seven hundred. Those are shown down in the expenditure section as well. And we had a couple expenditures related to grants that we're now showing in 2021. That's the award fee for the museum grant and for the park grant we're taking out of contingency.
We have to pay to submit and we have to pay if we win.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think we're coming out on top, though.
Oh, yeah. Rather have it than not.
So, that's the one, one a ton of revisions this time. Probably back in July for our next round. Happy to answer any questions?
Hearing no questions, is anyone prepared to make the motion that we approve these amendments?
I move to approve the number six revision to the 2019 Capital Improvement Budget, the number two revision to the 2020 Capital Improvement Budget, and the number one revision to the 2021 Capital Improvement Budget.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion on the point? Seeing no sign of that, let's do a roll call vote, beginning with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That carries unanimously. So, we are now down to item F, action to award custodial services for Phillips Recreation Center, Anita Purvis Nature Center, and the Brookins installation.
Derek's got that one.
Good evening. So, it's a time for us to rebid and re-award our custodial services. This was an approach we adopted over three years ago as a way to ensure that we have sort of a daily touch of our facilities, that each night we knew some basic clean tasks would get done and that we would then have additional staff that would come through during the day to touch the facilities, make sure they're holding up, that they're looking good. Prior to doing this, we were running into a situation where we would have some challenges, keeping our facilities cleaned. The staff that we had assigned to do this work were either out, had some leave, another another staff person was out on extended leave. And we were really scrambling to keep facilities clean in this polling lot from the operations staff. And so, this was done as sort of a trial basis. And I would say it's worked pretty well. It hasn't been perfect. But I think we also understand that the nature of some of this work and the hours when it's performed is in itself challenging. And that that's been reflected in the last three years with ESS, as well as during this bidding, we heard from folks that it's really hard to find folks that'll come in after hours to clean the facilities. One of the bidders that was interested in the project just couldn't find anybody that could work those hours. And as a result, we do have a fair amount of turnover throughout the year. And so, one of the things that we did, working with ESS, was to develop an approach where anytime a new staff is assigned to our facility, they'll be required to reorient with our staff as well as their own supervisory staff. And what we've heard is that that sort of approach is very effective in terms of getting more buy-in from the staff, making sure that they know what their responsibilities are. We also are going to have a new approach to doing the monthly inspections that will increase to weekly if there's shortcomings that are repeated. So, so a staff team that included Corky and myself, our custodial supervisory staff, our direct custodial staff, and then managers of our facilities reviewed our specs. And I'll share a screen here briefly. Oh, is it disabled?
Try again.
So, this is, these are our custodial tasks. So, this is the core of what they're bidding on, a series of daily tasks they do and a series of weekly tasks they do.
Can you zoom in on that at all? It's really small.
Yeah. Better? So, daily and weekly. We bid this, last time we included monthly and annual. And the costs for those, for those were too high. And we knew that with some of our own custodial staff, we could, we could catch up on those during our downtime, often during the winter break. We also wanted to share with you. Can you still see this? I'm scrolling.
Yep.
Yeah. We included the facility layouts that the contractors would know the areas they're cleaning. So, Brookins Square Footage Representation, Phillips Recreation Center.
Good idea.
And the Nature Center. We sent it out to eight different custodial teams, three of which were familiar to us from from last time, five new ones. And those five new ones were all ones that we found on the city of Champagne's minority women owned business enterprise system. They call it CDAT. We had five different groups attend the pre-bid. And as I mentioned, one of them couldn't find evening help. Another simply chose not to bid it. And then we got three bids, ESS, and then Mary's Made Service and Service Master. Of those three, ESS remained our low bid. And they're, of course, familiar to us and familiar with the facilities. We were really excited about both Mary's Masters and Service Master because it would have brought a new group into the fold. But in the end, they were just, you know, a little bit less competitive. So, I think the good news is that we're growing more interested in our bidding from minority contractors. And I think our program is having some success. But we're in a position today where, you know, we're looking at rewarding to the same contractor, ESS, for this work. And so, we would recommend to you all that we award the low bid contract to ESS for one year with an option to renew for years two and three. You know, we may actually bid this sooner than that, rebid it sooner. We think by year three, there's a good chance we're in our new health and malls facility. And that would represent a significant increase in square footage from what we do at Brookins today. And I think it would be a good time for us to rebid it and see if we can get even more interest from some of our minority contractors from that project. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No sign of questions. Is anyone ready to make the motion that we approve the contract for cleaning?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded that we award to the low bidder of ESS Clean and Incorporated Urbana, Illinois. So, is there any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That carries unanimously. So, we have awarded that contract. And lastly, is action to award Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center Domestic Hot Water Replacement Contract.
The replacement of our domestic hot water system was something that was identified with the engineering audit of the facility that was completed in two thousand fifteen by Councilman Hansacker. That system is responsible for the showers and sinks, not for the heating of the pool water itself. The hot water for those fixtures has been increasingly prone to failure and outages in the last couple of years. Pool management team includes our district leadership as well as the school district. In two thousand and twenty, agreed to replace that system. And we entered into a design contract with Heniman Engineering. That's the group we also had worked with for the pool pack replacement two years ago or so. So, we ended up going out to bid and advertise in the news gazette beginning on March twenty-fourth. Had our bid opening on April seventh, and we had four bids received at that time. The low bidder was Lance Heating and Cooling, which we called shortly after the bid opening. I just confirmed they were good on their pricing that they had provided. And we start to begin to move forward with our recommendation of award to you all tonight. It's at that time that their representative let us know that, yeah, they were good with their pricing. They just wanted to confirm that it only included the plumbing portion of the contract and they didn't have any of the electrical work included. So, that obviously was a red flag. Our bid documents state that the bid includes all labor, materials and related construction. So, that would include all the plumbing and electrical work for this project. And that's how we do all of our projects that go through the bidding process. So, due to that error by the low bidder and knowing, working with our engineers and identifying that the electrical portion was a pretty significant portion of their engineer's estimate for the project, staff believe that the district really would find it in the best interest to reject that low bid and move to the second low bid from United Mechanical. So, I called and talked to that representative from Lance again, who's just apologetic for his misunderstanding and understands that we need to move to the next low bidder. So, following that, I called United Mechanical to confirm their pricing as well and make sure that they were all good before we move forward with our award. And they said that, yeah, they, they were good with their pricing and everything's included. So, we're recommending to move forward with an award to them tonight. As far as budget, we have funds set aside from both the school district and the park district as part of that facility agreement. And that split's shown within the memo for that contract amount. That would be the second low bid, forty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. And we are recommending including a fifteen percent contingency, which amounts to seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. And just to touch a little bit on the schedule, the project's anticipated to result in a one-week facility closure. This year, there is no regular maintenance shutdown scheduled for the indoor pool. We usually have a two-week period each summer. And we had some questions with sourcing the equipment and lead times, and there's supply chain issues, as you all are aware, with a lot of different things right now during our pandemic. So, what we've done in the bid documents was that we would provide the contractor a thirty-day notice for the period that the park district will shut down their indoor, our indoor that the Park District will shut down their indoor, our indoor pool for one week. Just through our internal discussions, we're anticipating this to incur, to occur the last week of July, which is the regular, that falls within the regular time for our facility to close each year. But once we have a better idea of the lead time that's associated with the equipment, we'll be able to better finalize that, that schedule, and then notify the contractor and begin to notify the public and plan accordingly. I would anticipate we could do quite a bit more than 30 days, but that was just the amount of time that we identified in the bid documents themselves. So unless there's any questions, we're recommending for the board tonight to reject that low bid and award the project to United Mechanical Group of Champagne.
I was, I was just gonna add one thing. We're hoping to do it that weekend, in July, last week in July, so that hopefully, well, Crystal Lake Pool will be open, so we can accommodate those swimmers at our outdoor facilities. So it just makes it a lot nicer than not having any aquatic options for a week.
What would have happened had we just, had you not made that call to Lance? Would they have been stuck?
They would be, they could pull out of it, we could hold their bond.
Okay, I was, I was just curious how, how binding these, these bids were on the companies.
Nancy, our concern is that they may try to do it, you know, for that amount of money, and, and, you know, they need to figure out ways to cut corners and shave on the project. And, you know, you never want a contractor that's in that situation. So, you know, you really want a contractor that's bid a fair price, and that you're paying a fair price to make sure you're doing good work.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's really wise of you, and I'm sure that that guy is thanking his lucky stars that you guys called. So, yeah, it was just curiosity. I think you've done exactly the right thing. I was just curious.
Or we could have found out tomorrow when Andy lets him know the bid was awarded.
From the case of Toms. Well, I, I will move that we reject, let's see, do a, I don't, I can only.
I can do it, Nancy, if you want. I have it in front of me.
Okay, thank you, Meredith.
So I move to reject the low bid in the best interest of the Urbana Park District and award the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center Domestic Hot Water Replacement Project an amount of $49,980. And include.
890.
Sorry. No.
Mine says 890.
Mine says.
It says 980.
980 is what mine says.
Mine says 890. All of mine say 890.
Um, well, let me, I'm looking at the motion, not at the.
The annotated might be wrong. We better look at the actual.
Sorry.
I'm looking at the recommendation on the, on the document here, not the.
Okay.
Andy, do you want to double check that? Which one is it?
My memo should be the correct number.
Okay. So 890. Okay, all right, 49,890, and include a 15% contingency of 7,000, I don't know if that's gonna be right, 7,483.50 to United Mechanical Group of Champagne.
Second.
Oh.
That, that amount is correct.
Great. So moved by Meredith, seconded by LaShonda. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, let's go to our roll call vote then. Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And so we are buying ourselves a new domestic hot water system. That brings us to any action involving new business removal consent agenda. There was none, so we are down to comments from commissioners.
So I'll just briefly say that I'm, this is my first board meeting without the board, a hard packet, board packet. And I never thought about how many, I'm not trying to shame anyone who still needs paper, but it's 197 pages. And that's hard to fathom when we get it, like, how many physical pages it is. So that's, it's just interesting. It's not as, I don't love it as much as I thought I would, moving between screens.
Thank you, I don't either.
I keep, I keep accidentally closing things and having to go back to the email. No, and reopening, which is what just happened with that motion, because I was like, crap, I just, you know.
Where is it?
I just closed the board packet accidentally. Anyway, but we are trying, as part of, you know, our climate initiative to be more conscientious, but for now, I'm gonna stick with it.
Yeah, I think that this wouldn't have been quite so, so many pages had we not had both the preliminary budget and the, and the thing. I think that there was, but I looked at that, and I thought, oh my gosh, that's a lot of paper. My feeling is exactly, yeah.
And then the only other comment question, are we doing neighborhood nights this summer?
We're not.
And why are, can we, can you help us? What was the thought process on that?
So.
So we're still working under phase four and trying to be able to control a crowd. I mean, I think the smallest number of people we had at a neighborhood night was around 150 people in the past.
Okay.
And even in the bridge phase, if we ever get to that, they're saying like 100 people. And so, again, we had to decide this about three and a half, four months ago, not knowing where we're at. But our goal is to, if we can do some pop-up stuff, we will, as things get better, hopefully.
I just think that's really helpful if folks ask us to have some clear, concrete responses, because I, you know, the program guides are out, and I noticed that was missing. I assumed it was as much, but I appreciate the confirmation.
Yep.
Other commissioner comments? Well, I will make one last comment. Again, thank you, LaShonda, for being here this evening. Much appreciate your service, and I hope maybe you'll show up for the, the joint meeting on the 4th of May. But if you, if you don't, we'll be thinking of you, and thanks again for your six years of service. And I'd also like to thank Cedric Stratten for being here this evening, observing the meeting. And I hope indeed that this won't be the last time.
He's not regretting his choice. Too late, Cedric, too late.
At any rate, unless there are any other commissioner comments, I believe we have exhausted our agenda. And I will declare us adjourned for this evening, and thank you all for coming out.